By the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, we take both please.
Mayor Lacine.
Here.
Mayor Protemski.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Present.
Councilmember Kronak.
Here.
Councilmember Kimble.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Cole or? Mr. Cole, do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest?
Mr. Mayor, I receive no disclosures of conflicts of interest for tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have an agenda and the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda or are there any modifications?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Motion passes seventy zero. Next up, we have recognition for Veterans Day. Um, I don't have anything prepared, but we do have a list of people that I can. This is in our packet. I don't know if it's posted. Is it shown online or? But um, there are twenty veterans that are associated with the town of Monument, both staff and council. Eight of them are US Army, seven US Navy and submarine service. Two US Air Force, three US Marine Corps. For a combined total service of two hundred and fifteen years, six months and twenty-seven days. There are four of us sitting up here at the council and you have many police officers. And other staff members that are veterans and and their names and ranks and service numbers are all listed uh in the packet if you would like to take a look at it. Um, so any comments from my fellow vets or any other council members that wanted like to say anything about Veterans Day besides the goodies that are out there and?
All the decoration.
Best twenty years of my life? A blast.
Just twenty?
Here we go.
Twenty twenty was plenty enough.
Twenty twenty years in the Air Force is like going through high school. Forty years in the Navy, other than on the other hand.
If you had to do thirty, you kind of wonder.
I was in the business of war and business was kind of.
Okay. Will, will you cut our mics off now because?
All right, any any other comments? All right. Uh, then uh, the beginning of our um. Our agenda is going to kick off with a review of our draft twenty twenty-six budget and uh leading that charge will be our finance director Jennifer Phillips.
Good evening. Unfortunately, my computer just froze. Oh, I need a moment.
While while we unfreeze computers, oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm.
There you go.
I'm noticing a few young folks in the in the crowd.
Want to pick on him?
Yes.
Okay, let's pick on him.
Are you are you? Are you here for a specific other than just to attend this fascinating meetings? Are you here for school or really?
Our high school does civic engagement.
No, 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 then then you get to come up here and here. How many others are here for for school, comma, you're the next contestant.
No, no, no.
Oh. Coming up, you get to sit. You won't get to vote, but. But you get to sit, so. There you go. That's what happens behind the scenes. Wait, come on. We got seven seats. Yeah, but there's those videos for there.
So what school?
Yes, what's? Is this a government class?
Oh.
Yeah, nice.
We've seen you guys in here before. You guys.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a picture.
Eric. Start start hammering away.
Oh, boy.
We're going viral any second. Is that gonna be a TikTok or Insta? What is that gonna be on? Snapchat?
It's a TikTok.
MySpace?
Jennifer, I have it.
Everybody in the, come on, everybody.
Get locked in. This is what happens. This is over. We're not watching cartoons or.
We've got this moment.
Fortnite, right? Fortnite? Oh, I know what.
Oh, okay.
I'm a little.
I mean, I just.
It's really more than twenty-five. So this is what. Those are the. You'll get that long. It gets much.
Will's primary mission back there besides running IT is to listen for the the words next slide. Next slide. Jennifer, ready? Come on down. Yeah, if you guys want to, you guys want to sit up here the rest of the night, feel free. You're welcome.
Yep.
What? What? Join the meeting now.
Before the storm.
Yeah.
All right, here we go. We are. Okay, thank you very much for your patience. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, Jennifer Phillips, finance director. What I'll be presenting tonight is the draft proposed budget. And as we talked about, this is all about the numbers. So there's nothing fancy. No descriptions. We don't talk about accomplishments. We're literally looking at the numbers. And so I'm using the same format that I've used most of this year just to keep consistency. Um, so what we're going to go over today is um especially the general fund budget because that's really where we've been talking about having enough revenue, managing our expenses and watching our general fund reserve. We're going to go through the revenue and expense projections. Now I have a very basic slide up for each of the departments and each of the funds and you have as well as the public has the detail. And so to be able to put the detail up on the slide is pointless because it's too small. And so I am here, my amazing colleagues are here. Uh, we have other people, all the department heads are here, Cassie's here. And so as we look at the numbers and you've gone through them, you have questions about specific things. We'll try to answer those. There may be something we can't answer and we can follow up with you. Um, after this then and then give us, we will come back with a budget book which will have a lot more information about the town, have a lot more information about the budget on the seventeenth of November. That will hopefully be the final draft, which you will then adopt on the first of December. So that's the plan. All right, so again, ten funds, right? So the the other nine funds that are listed here, aside from the general fund are restricted revenues. We have to use them for very specific purposes. And the general fund is our discretionary fund where we fund the majority of our operations out of. So to start off with, our general fund projected revenue is fourteen million for twenty twenty-six. See, it's down slightly. We've tried to take into consideration that the the two the the twenty twenty-five sales tax revenues are down. They're down about eleven percent. And so I took um, I did a zero percent increase in twenty five over twenty-five for twenty-six. Twenty-six is just an unknown. You could say, put it up two percent, put it up five percent, drop it another five percent. I thought neutral was the best. We'll come to you again in May as we did this year with an amended budget and if things look better, we can make those adjustments. They look worse, we can unfortunately make those adjustments as well. So I thought that was a good sort of conservative but not overly conservative middle point. Property taxes continue to rise slightly, especially in Monument as we're building more buildings and businesses and and homes. So you'll see the property tax up slightly. Uh, investment income is down slightly. Um, and again, we talked about this for the cost allocation plan that we recently completed that it was determined the water fund needed to allocate more monies towards the general fund to repay us for the work that we're doing to support the water fund. And that's one of the reasons we did the cost allocation plan. And so we're able to increase that by not quite four hundred thousand dollars. We've also done that in twenty-five, so you'll see that as an amendment when we come to you with the amended twenty-five budget. Uh, and then we're adding that revenue for twenty-six. So as I keep telling Tom, thank you. Water fund. But to assure you that these expenses are absolutely appropriate, legal and legitimate. It's very, very important that we do not use the water fund. It is specific for the delivery of water. Store water, we can use it for nothing else. And so I've been very careful working with Tom to make sure that we are using that revenue properly and that we're also doing that water rate study, right, to make sure that we're we're looking at the rates that we're charging our customers to be able to cover the full cost of running an enterprise business, which is the water fund. So just some real quick as we talk about revenues, these are some things that we'll discuss at the end of the presentation, but I just want to put them in your mind already. Um, so one of the things we've talked about is increasing the property um tax mill levy to the maximum amount that the council is allowed to do. We've held it at a lower amount um in previous years, and so that would be one of the opportunities to increase the revenue. A little over two hundred thousand dollars if you wanted to do that. Um, we also found that we used to have a franchise fee from the water fund, which is a legitimate utility fee. Somewhere somehow that was discontinued. Um, and we would recommend that that be reinstated and that would need to be done through by the council. That would bring in another three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Another thing that Lori recently discovered that we'd like to bring to you is the state has always provided taxpayers with a hundred dollar up to a hundred dollar credit when they file their taxes in a timely manner. It's now going to discontinue that and many towns are following suit. And so we would recommend that we also do that and that would potentially save us another about a hundred or bring in another hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So we are looking for these additional pieces of revenue to bolster up that general fund. There are opportunities. We've talked repeatedly about the fee study that's underway. That is a pretty heavy lift. Everyone needs to, anyone who's involved in any kind of service that has um, a staff person to it now has to catalog that time. So we can then determine what it costs to provide all of these services in the fee study. We'll bring that to you in the early part of the next year and that'll be another opportunity to look at increased revenues. And then again, paid parking at Mint Lake is something we've been talking about. Um, just quick charts and um, I know these were really ugly in the um, online presentation. Was my mistake. Um, this is just some scenarios to give you an idea of eat a sort of an estimated increment if you wanted to increase the property tax levy. My recommendation would be that you increase. Are there are spots in between that and I just want to make that clear. And then on the parking, this looks even. Um, some opportunities to raise revenues through the parking. There is an initial investment. It'll take a little time to get. Enforcement, but there is an opportunity to have some revenue come in through parking at Monument Lake. That needs to be a full discussion because having paid parking then impacts other parking areas, but we can have that conversation with you. But that's just another thing that's potentially on the radar as we're looking to balance that budget. Because the challenge we have, right, so we have fourteen million in revenue that I just talked about. The challenge is this year for twenty-six, we're still looking at fourteen point seven. We're still coming up short despite fight the layoffs, despite the cuts, and we talked about the fact that this is a very lean budget and it used as a base budget moving forward. We are doing very little capital improvement, other than other capital improvement. Any vehicles out of the general fund. Not a good base budget to say, okay, we're really close to balancing. It's good. Let's move forward. Here, we are not. And with that additional revenue of about four hundred thousand dollars that I just identified, we look for additional revenue. We need to to address the capital improvements and the equipment and CIP and all of those things we'll discuss. So we still do have a challenge. If the council were to authorize that additional revenue, this number would be um, the revenue, the revenue number would come up and we would be closer to being balanced. As I mentioned several times last year when we approved the twenty-five budget, using general fund reserves to balance your budget is perfectly legal. Perfectly legal. There's nothing wrong with doing that. It's just, we don't want to continue that practice, but the council absolutely has a discretion and the ability to do that. So this is the expense budget broken out just to kind of, I always like graphs, see, just a bit better. You can see and the capital and maintenance that is not sustainable. Did that for this year. That is absolutely not sustainable. We need to look at how we're going to be able to fund those things moving forward. So weeks when I bring you the long range financial forecast, we need to talk about, I can't use this base budget and extrapolate that out. We need to look at a more realistic budget and extrapolate that out. Right, so the upside is um, we have a higher general fund. Six, so the cuts that we did in twenty-five, so remember, we started addressing this fairly early and I really appreciate. We started making decisions in May, right, and we started looking not only at twenty-five but twenty-six and those efforts now are showing in the fact that we are cutting expenses in and we're about that thirty-one, thirty-two percent projected for twenty-six. So that is above the twenty percent goal that the council has. But keep in mind, you still haven't funded an emergency fund, you haven't funded an economic certainty fund, we haven't that maintenance and capital. And so this is great, but it's it's great in a very small window. Any questions on any of that before I head into the departments? Okay, so town council, um, I just, again, these are highlights. Um, and anything that might be notable that I wanted to bring to the council's attention as we're having this discussion. So preliminary budget is down slightly, mostly from reduced training. Still funded in there is um dollars for um, the community ships. So the three groups that you provide that funding to did present to the citizens' service levels advisory committee and they were supportive of funding those three groups. So that money has been left in there. Um, and so just bringing those things to your attention. So what's what's in the budget? This is again a highlight, so I don't know if you want me to stop at each of these. If you have questions or you're just gonna throw up your hand. I can keep going, whatever is the pleasure of the count. Keep rolling. All right. This is town administration. Um, so you see, um, we've also reduced. Um, one position was eliminated from town. But I didn't know what other word to use, so um, not, it's not personal, it's. Um, and then we added the forty-one thousand dollars for the emergency preparedness. Added in. Here's the overview for the town administration. Have, whoops. Clerk. This budget has also gone down. We lost one position. Clerk division. And this is now the budget for them proposed. Finance, so um, we actually went up because we had one position added, uh, moved from passing out in finance. Main reason behind that is to continue to look for grants and efforts towards grants. They will be far more competitive. We don't know what the state and the federal government will have available for us. Uh, but we will certainly try and unless we have more targeted efforts against that, we're going to miss opportunity. So that'll be a big part of what Cassie will do in finance. Also be programs that she'll take with her uh from parks and we'll talk about those later. Uh, but I did to have her in finance. And so there's the finance budget. This is human resources. This has also gone down. It's gone down mostly because um, in this budget, we had the ADA study. And that will be coming to you in two the full self-assessment and you'll see the costs also associated with that and progress. And with the consultant and start trip away at those. And identified in that, that will be part of our CIP. You're here to continue to assess that. Ecology, you can see Will's effort to continue. Savings, he turns every contract over, looks at every opportunity, whether it's ten dollars, twenty dollars, a thousand dollars. Um, he's just done a great job of really trying to slim down that. The court. Could see the court budget, it's come down slightly this year. Here's law enforcement. Um, in this budget again, all positions are funded. So as a reminder, in twenty twenty-five, the police department not fill several positions to help the overall town with the budget shortfall. Had they not done that and not been a good partner with us, I think the layoffs would have been larger. I think the cuts would have been harder. And so there is a perception out there that, you know, law enforcement and police are fully funded. Um, and they didn't take any of the pain. Just want to make it clear that that is absolutely not the case. To the table and they were a huge part of us being able to balance twenty-five, being able to keep as many people as we did and being able to move now into twenty-six and we we need to fill those positions for the safety of the officers and the safety of the community. So right now all positions are funded in this budget for the law enforcement. Overall budget, you can see, and the difference again is the fact that we unfunded some of those positions in twenty-five as part of the budget amendment to help us balance. Planning budget. An engineer expenses were added into this, but you'll also see a revenue offset because now these expenses are going to be billed appropriately to different developers. So that's really great. That's a change in how we're doing. It's the planning budget. So now we're getting into public works. So the streets budget, um, again, we lost one position in this.
To the planning budget. Twenty-six other.
Yes. Somebody. One of those, uh huh. Do you know what it is off that?
Yeah, the county plan.
They'll they'll look it up real.
Yeah, look it up. Oh, um, so um, you'll you'll see uh quite a bit of our um attorney attorney fees that were over at admin, signed over to a co. Uh, we also have um, uh, we're bringing on a consultant to assist us. Enforcement work, so a lot of that is just trying to. Uh, we owe to you uh here the expenditures towards code enforcement, uh attorney fees and and others. Uh, I'll continue to provide more detail as we go throughout the the budget cycle.
Like an allocation? It's an expense. Okay, streets. So again, one position we love. Very, very limited capital projects and equipment for a department. He needs need. Here's their overall budget. Get into facilities. Again, another position was eliminated. And also the Verage, we had the Verage project which increased the facilities budget for twenty-five, so you'll see that. Um, fleet. Fleet's pretty consistent. It consists of two people who work terribly hard. Um, we talked about the fact when areas of need in the future, but if we continue to grow and have more equipment and more vehicles, that two's not gonna cut it. And so that's when I have that cautionary tone of we, yes, it's it's we're getting there, but there's such a deep need. So that would be one of the areas. Um, parks and so um, again, we eliminated one position at parks and one position was moved over to finance. So there's parks budget. That's the general fund and those are the departments. Now we get into the funds. Capital projects fund. Um, so this is um, for capital projects, this is how the revenue comes in. And this is what's listed currently for capital projects. These projects are very important. This is our user fee, our user um tax monies that come directly into the capital projects fund and so they must be used for capital projects. The the curb gutter sidewalks is very important because that helps us with our ADA transition. Because those, many of those are ADA improvements and so that's really positive. So as we move through and we look at that transition plan. So that we know that we're making progress towards that. Um, again, just to emphasize, there's no funds for publicity, no funds for police facility, no funds for Jackson Creek. Um, and this is where I just want to share the fund balance because these are individual funds. So just like for the general fund, we have the thirty-one percent. Right, so we want to make sure that there's fund balance here. One, it tells you what's available in case you wanted to to do a project that's appropriate out of one of these funds. Um, but also that you know what's on, so um, in in capital projects, um, it's the nine million we but again, a large portion of that are the grant. Logged into the capital projects fund balance. Two A, so this is um for water and vertical infrastructure expenses. We anticipate about the two point seven million um coming revenue. This is some big water projects that are twenty twenty-six. We anticipate, um, well, here are the projects, so tank project, renewable water, um, which is has directed to have the two million water and then every year we have to pay the one point two seven bond payment for the twenty millions that we, twenty million dollars that we borrowed to do the water projects. Here's the fund balance. So anticipation is that there's going to be a lot of expenditures coming up in twenty-six in this fund and so balance is expected to go down below a half million. For police, this is the two F. We dropped that down a little bit because we have seen the property taxes come down, so we did account for that. The expenses under two F. Some of the highlights are some vehicles. Position upgrades to rifles, some other increased training, things like that. The fund balance for the two F fund at the end of twenty-six is it to be thirteen thousand dollars. Community development fund, this is specifically for economic development. This is from business licenses, so we're anticipating about a hundred thousand dollars in business licenses. Um, we are seeing an increase. Um, I hopefully through this. We are seeing an increase, hopefully through the self-collect because we're having such a better. Lori talked about that at the last council meeting. Our connection between the sales tax that are coming in, we can alert Tina that there's a business that she can follow up with that business. So we're, we're really feeling a better connection there. So here's the expenses. Highlights, community events, concerts in the park, Independence Day. And travel and training was eliminated from expenses in this. About $130,000 at the end of. Six for the fund balance in this fund. Impact fees, we anticipate about 100,000. This is one of the things we're studying and some come to you with a traffic impact fee study. Traffic or with a impact fee study. It's going to be interesting because there aren't a lot of traffic projects to charge impact fees for. Because we're basically, from a traffic standpoint, from a arterial road, we're basically out. And so we will bring that study to you. I think that the study will have more benefit a year from now when the comp plan is done. Because traffic impact fees are specifically for growth. But can't be to maintain what we have today. And so if we don't have projects on the books, then take a portion of our projected growth and charge that impact fee. So I think we're going. It in this first round of the study until we get the comp plan done. And then when the comp plan's done, then we can work and identify projects that can then have impact fees associated with that. So this is again designated for infrastructure related to traffic. So public works generally budgets about $100,000 and then determines through the year if there are projects that are appropriate use for these impact fees. Because again, it's a very specific, can't be used for maintenance. It has to be used for projects that are impacted by growth. And so if that, all that moves forward, right, we anticipate a little left in that, in that fund. Storm drain. Though some user fees for that are, is the revenue. And then the expenses, since in repairs, you'll see in 25, that's the ARPA money that we had that we designated for those. Remaining amount of ARPA money, about 100 and a million forty or a million, a million four, a million five, we put into the general fund reserve. Which again, is one of the reasons we have a higher general fund reserve because we had ARPA money. So if you took out that ARPA money, which was one time money related to COVID, the general fund would be much lower. So thankfully, we didn't spend that on projects. We kept it and with the council's approval in the general fund reserve to better boost that. Again, with projects, we anticipate utilizing funds and then having about $1,000 left over. Water fund. So through user fees, charges through the rates. Anticipating that to come down a little bit. But again, it's, it's, it's very unknown right now because we're doing the rate study. It's been a while. It's been 10 years since we've done a rate study. And so rate study raised, raised the rates for the first five years. So the last five years, you haven't. Water rates. And so we think it's important to be able to address that and make sure. Paying for itself. And, and that's what the rate payers do is they pay for closed system of a water system. These are the expenses. So again, some bigger projects, capital projects. That's the debt service moving out of the water fund. No, sorry, the, the two A pays the debt service moving into the water fund and then the big cost comes out of the water fund. Here are some highlights, some rehab, building a new tank, some new pipelines. And so you see some. Thing for the water system. Anticipate about $8 million left in the water fund, which is good. But as we look at the rates, we want to make sure that there's adequate money to continue to do capital improvements because not to raise the rates, but then for infrastructure and your capital get behind and your system gets out of date. And then the cost to do that, you're looking at double, triple, quadrupling rates because you're so far behind. We want to make sure that we're keeping up with the rates to be able to cover the cost of this system. Cost operating and. The park impact fee revenues, those have gone down considerably. So that's another thing we'll be looking at in, in the impact study and also with the comp plan. What, what new parks do we have planned? What areas could we, are impacted by growth? And could we charge park impact fees for? This is the expected expenses. This is mostly Heart of Monument. Having that discussion with you moving forward, this is. Variety of revenues that ultimately help this fund be able to support the project. At the end of 26, we anticipate $150,000 in that fund. This is the Conservation Trust Fund. This is specifically for parks and open space. So we're anticipating about a $60,000 capital outlay for that. And maybe about 200,000 left at the end of 26. Questions on any of that? Funds are okay. They're all right. And some of them we have no control over, whether it's the lottery or whatever it may be. And, and we'll talk to you about user fees, that funds capital. Capital projects. And so there are some opportunities there. Right now, the funds are balanced and there is some curve in each of them.
So back to, you don't have to go all the way back because I have it up on. The council section, there's economic. Wasn't here. What's that for?
That's the community sponsorships for the three organizations that you sponsor every year.
And. And supplies and things like that. It's like electronics and things. Correct. So. Expenses, those to you guys. You guys have done an excellent job. Thing. And I know it's. Have a new issues, everybody. And different. So increasing the revenue seem to be the fix at the moment. Your projections are zero flat, which I also commend you for doing that because everybody else that I see is two to 4% projected increases. And I hope they're right.
I hope so too.
Because that solves a lot of problems. So. That combined with. And grants and additional sales tax. Where we need to be.
Yep.
So, uh, back to the. 62K. If those funds were to be. Reader.
The town manager and see if that would just go towards the. So that we have. Or if there are certain things that, that felt we needed to do in 26 and we did. So it'd be something we would talk about. If that was direction, that would be something we would. Week.
But if it was for a year, just did that for 2026.
Challenge is it's good, right? And, and we're, yeah, and it's very appropriate to use the. Better not to, but it's legal and appropriate to use your general fund reserve to balance your budget. We have an ongoing structural deficit. So it's, it's, yes, you could, you could not fund that for one year. But it's an ongoing deficit. And so we're, we're okay in 26 in the sense that what we present, we can, we can squeak by with and, and for those additional revenues so that we can start to do the things that this town need. Unity and for the organization.
Then the water, you, the water utility, the. After the entire monument that. You, or is that just the?
It's a franchise fee. So it's, it's just like what a cable provider would provide, any of the utilities. So that's what we used to charge it. It got dropped off and we're recommending that you charge it again.
Utilities at surface, including ourselves, we would charge our own.
They already do. It's just that water got dropped off.
Add it back in.
Correct.
So monument, water, tri-view, metro.
It can't rattle off all the, all the.
Those are the three.
But, but there's also Comcast, right? So there's, it's, it's broadband and things like that. So if you want a list of that, I can either ask Lori right now, or I can follow up with you.
But it's not a list of water providers. It's a list.
When did the franchise?
We, we don't really know. Do we have a? The, the auditors actually caught it.
But they did.
Oh, good.
Put an audit in the previous.
We like our new auditors.
$2 million in renewable water.
That's a direction of council to, to set aside $2 million in case a renewable water source were to come about. And you have money's available to, to move in that direction.
Franchise fees, is it possible to back in time and figure out when they were dropped off and go reflect those fees?
It's really hard because once the books are closed. It's been tapped, we, we did some of those things when the books were still open. That's why we're like with 25, we're going to charge the additional 400,000 for the cost allocation plan. But you really start messing with your actuals, which have been printed and they're in your budgets. And it's, it's really tough to go back.
Another special meeting. Questions, Scott, it's on the presentation, anything you have?
I'm not done yet. All right.
Keep going.
Capital improvement budget, right? Capital improvement projects. And I talked about last time when we adopted the budget. It wasn't, it wasn't where it needed to be. Got it together because it was, it's in the code that you have to adopt a by for capital improvement plan. But what we've provided you in your pack in and is also available to the public is a list put together by the departments of capital project needs for the next five years. So the idea is for you to look at those and if maybe there's something missing, maybe there's something you have no interest in, maybe there's. I don't know. I wanted you to see the list. So again, this is about numbers, right? It's fancy here. It's just, this is what we think we need. And I think the most important number is the one at the end. And, and needs. And so when I talk about the fact that, you know, close to balancing and we have a 30% reserve, the needs in this organization, in this community are. A lot. That's why we, that list is important. We will then prioritize it. We'll budget very little in 26 as I've. But we need to start to look at some of those things in future, including the ADA upgrades. So. Questions? Any thoughts about that? Steve will be presenting that. We'll have a separate, we'll have an operating budget and a capital budget and you'll see two documents.
How involved does the comp plan become as part of the capital proof?
It will. So, right? So that's. I wanted you to see what we have. Be a huge feeder into that. And so it's, it's not worth grinding over at this point. It's not worth having public meetings. Like it's, it's too speculative right now. It's based sort of on what we know. And so the comp plan is, is very important for that. And that discussion then will drive, okay, what are the priorities? Let's really look at that comp plan. How do we fund those things? Comp plan, look at the capital improvement plan. And truly accurate capital improvement plans should have operating costs associated with any major capital projects. So we have to remember that if we build a police station, the additional cost to, to. Fund electricity, clean, other police station and the insurance. If we build a public works facility, right? And a lot of times capital improvement plans. List those kinds of projects, they sort of lead that off. All of a sudden, you've built this building and then you have all these additional operating costs of, of managing this new facility. So we want to, so right now we're talking about a public or being a police facility and we're talking about a capital cost. And we haven't even talked about the operating cost. Need to talk about those things too. Are you? Is a very powerful tool.
Thank you.
Wish it wasn't.
I know. As painful as it is, it's appreciated.
Wish it was a little brighter. All right. So from tonight, I'll be doing is my team and I will rising the final draft budget, which we then will bring to you in two weeks. And so to be able to do that, I need some council direction. Regarding, do you want to calculate in the increase in the full mill levy? Do you want to reinstate that water utility franchise fees? Other revenues we should start to look at. This is one of the things I'll be talking in service level advisory committee is some revenue options. Talk to them about what that would take. Is there appetite for that? It's a, it's a great place to start to, to have these discussions. But if you have any other ideas that, that we can look into, are there any other expenses you're like in the budget? Please let us know. We. Choose not to add those additional revenues than to really understand that you're using $700,000 worth of general fund reserve to balance the 20. I just, I always promised you that I'd be very clear and direct in how I present. And so I want you to know. We can ratchet that down a little bit if you look at these additional revenue sources. And so I'm, that's the direction I really, I need to, to be able to finalize the final draft.
Good with what you said. I would also, you know, bring up for discussion because it's tough to talk about any kind of tax increases and. Taber, everything goes to a vote. You know, we. It didn't get presented well, that. From people who don't live here, which makes that type of a. Axe so much more palatable. Other things for free and, and that helps us in some areas and we can allocate. Allocate it to. Have a very low mill levy also. I mean, we could probably start talking about whether or not we need to think about raising that. The portion of my house that goes to Town of Monument is like $250. So. We talk about that. Otherwise. Retip tax, whatever we can get. Hope that the economy. Whether it's the next year or two.
Those are exactly the four. So I have lodging tax, property tax, the mill levy. I also have user fees, the user tax that it's lower, it's a 2%. And most communities, it's so a sales tax, you're charged sales tax. Or if you're not charged sales tax, you're charged a user tax. Place of a sales tax. And so right now they're getting a deal. 2% instead of three and a half. So that's another thing I'll bring to the citizens committee. And then also a sales tax. Of, right? We have two A and we have two F. So this is one of the reasons this committee was created is to start to vet, right, all of these things out. So remember with the lodging tax, if we're going to do a lodging tax, we have to do a short. Because the bulk of the revenue will, short-term rentals, which means.
Right. That's another thing. That's not the people who own this that are paying this. Seems to come up. Like it's dipping into their profit on top, which Colorado Springs does or else. And. The other one would. Whatever that will generate. Without developer impact. A below average.
Yes.
Line with. Line with other.
Yep. Is to be a tax. So on a general tax across the board, you're using some. So it's, that's why it's a user fee. So if I, if I never come to planning and I don't ever build a house, I don't, I don't, I shouldn't pay for the planning department to issue that permit and to do that check and to do all of those things that planning does to help house. It's direct, you're getting a service for it. Big people in that regard.
Has anybody ever had, had a chance to read the implement costs that possibly get eliminated? I, I am concerned about skipping a year or two. Especially those, those professional developments that lead to certification and areas that are know, Rocky Mountain drinking fest. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, but you know, if there's something in here that requires certification, like, you know, DUI training, they certified phlebotomist probably want them going to. I'm concerned about if we donate some of this training.
The training that's listed in that MO is in the budget.
Not removing any, well, so what happened to CML outright?
Correct. If it's not on the list, it's not in the budget. If CML is in for the town manager. So at this point. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought we were taking, so this, the registration at our annual dues, is that registration then?
For
and the travel is they never have.
So it could be reduced a little bit. I need it altogether.
So as far as well, she said that we're as lean as we're going to be able to get. I'm just, this is hanging fruit. If we all skip general fund.
I agree.
15,000 towards the 62. Sponsorship that I have an issue with it too, Ken, but
or, or it's 15,000 that are certifications that have need.
That's right.
I'm just saying that's not good.
The council agency is very inexpensive. We're hoping for less than a thousand dollars. It's really kind of net.
Anyway, I think you can cross off on the list, the CML conference for
but, but it towards certifications for.
Just contribution. And don't pay a cent share, okay?
You too.
Okay. So everybody's read everything on this. If you have an issue with us raising any form of tax, buddy suffering through the same town is. Do you think the parking at the lake needs to be sized into something that shows not just program in place where we're looking for park can be maintained and that we fund it properly from a staffing perspective, that, that money it gets put into the park funds and allows us to build a little bit of reserve for that, that road that has to constantly be maintained. And beyond just all of us volunteering to go pick up after their people leave all the time. They show up here, they use our park for free and then they dump on it. Times I've been out there to.
And designate that revenue to the park fund.
So how soon before we have finalized details on what that parking program would look?
Months.
That's like seven.
People use it, then you can get our money. And then some.
I don't mind doing that. Um, I just don't want it to look like there's some parking space at a place that's only should be like not. What is a kiosk? Okay. Then I think it's probably.
And then the, the lodging tax, short-term rental program, probably educational. We having license fees that are measured within itself, so that the tax itself is above a minimum. And if people participate, then your house out short-term. It's a business. Yeah. I want to see it way more restrictive, but we'll.
Yeah, I have a problem with the, the
franchise fee should never have gone away.
The property tax increase she's talking about is
I know it's like, it's like 18 per, per citizen for the year.
And, and a mill levy, um, I wasn't here at the time, I was but you guys lower the mill levy based on bad information? That was two years ago, right? You guys fed bad information on financing. Do, but that information was lower than the levy. Doing that, but now that, that's where it should.
And, and part of that was also tied to the, am it going away?
Yeah, yeah.
Currently, and I agree with you on that.
But I'm definitely not for raising taxes. Didn't want to raise taxes, but I think that was, it was kind of a mistake that no one's really easily.
Well, for the record, we can't raise tax.
No, no.
So the citizens that would, but we can adjust the bill levy back up. Going to the vote. They're going to give us 315,000.
Plus the 100,000 if we discount, the discount for the sales tax. And in time. Thousand or so.
Oh, that's a sales tax thing. So people who pay on time, get it?
Up to a hundred dollars. About a extra $100,000 in revenue. Eliminate that program like the state is and many we would recommend doing that as well. We'd have to do a code amendment, which wouldn't be hard, but we would recommend that as well.
What does council want to do? Yeah, I'm good with the council, the, the, the question that's listed on the, on the slide here. Um, as well as the, the, the those tax.
I, I don't want to, um, that too, but I don't want to overlook, uh, council. There's the five, three entities, so, uh, 25.
The chamber.
Visitor center that, that actually has funds, the visitor center component of. Right?
That's correct.
And silver key.
Visitor center stuff would go away.
Councilman Campbell, if we were 25,000 and that would be on his back and staff, which doesn't have to end with or the personnel.
I understand. I'm just looking at all options for investment would have been I was telling you right now.
I've those that were here, uh, that represented the council on the, um, committee, I've not, I mean, I need to see data. I've not seen the data from the chamber, shows their economic impact. What they've done for that. Other two I get because they're charitable donations or nonprofits. And we know they get back to the community in way more ways because we're all involved. But it asks the council for more money tonight.
We get to that point.
But where's the raw data that showed what the, the chamber has contributed economically with that $25,000? I just haven't seen that, the info.
Well, the council requested that the three organizations present to the advisory committee first. And so that information has been provided to them. If you would like the chamber to come and make a presentation and provide you with information, we absolutely can do that invite.
Or I could just hear from the members that's there. What their, their, uh, if their expectations were met or not, what they think the 25,000.
That would be very appropriate. Yes.
My expectations were not met, but we're doing, I will say say that Madeline has some very good concerns about putting that off. And so and it's hard thing to measure because what do you, what do you do? You, you count how many people go in there to the visitor center and what they do. I, I don't know how you quantify that.
Why we didn't get any quantification.
Right. Wasn't particularly happy with the presentation for other reasons.
You know.
Concerns about it and I'd like to be able to give you what you need to run this town. Say what you think. Your concerns.
So largely my concerns have to do with tourism and attracting people to our town is a big effort. Getting people to come to our downtown, the, is things that we need to do. And we don't have a downtown that's easily seen from the interstate. The Chamber of Commerce, where they sit on the council or on the board for the visit Colorado Springs Chamber, um, or a visit Colorado Springs. And so they have partnered numerous times with them. Their website has information about coming to Monument shopping here. Things that are difficult for the town to put on their they also manage, um, our partnership. So our downtown merchants, so they help all of the events the downtown merchants put on. I'm afraid all of those events would wait because what we've seen happen is the merchants don't have the bandwidth themselves to organize. And the chamber has really stepped in and taken on that, how the staffing to do that. That's a big lift, you know, it's all the marketing, it's coordinating art, art hop in and of itself is a really big process. So I think that those, those kind of events would really suffer. The advertising that the chamber does on their website for businesses in and out of Monument, you know, they're, they're bigger than just municipal have been ever since they were created in the seventies. Those things do add value. It's hard to quantify, but if they're not happening at all, that's where my concern is. Because we, we need those efforts to continue and I would hate for them to go away. And then we have to rebuild that effort when we don't have the capacity to do that. And those are, those are my major concerns.
What is, what is, do you know what they changed?
I do. And they, did they say it in a public meeting?
Yes, she said it.
She did say it. Yeah. I want to say it's roughly $250,000.
Three, three.
Three, three fifty? Okay.
And we still need the, our contribution.
So our contribution is 25,000 and that was meant to staff a person to be in visitor center. So Monday through Friday, nine to five. There, they didn't have a staff person previous to that agreement to, to run that. So anytime a person comes into the, the building and asks for maps or, you know, where they should, a lot of times when I was, when my office was at the chamber, we would have people that were looking to move here or new members to the community and come in and ask a whole bunch of questions. And that gives the Chamber of Commerce a person to be there to answer questions.
Well, don't they have a grant for a person as well? They used to, but I've forgotten now because I think it was Julie that was funded by a grant.
I believe during some of the funding that they got from Barbara, which was one time funding, might have helped with some of that, but I don't remember her Terry saying that in our presentation.
And my, my follow-up to that would, would be in today's economy, the grant probably will dry up or has already dried up. So perhaps that's not even considered, but.
We know what our capital expenditures have been on that building. Given that we own the building and have to make a rent for the use of it. What is, what is the keep that building maintained?
I don't, I, we have to go back. And I know that we've had some large expenses. Um, we've had to put a roof on that. I believe we've had that of H-back repair as well, but they're not ongoing expenses. They've just been repairs that have been needed because the building is teen seventies model. Correct. And I mean, that's an option if the building was sold. I don't, I don't know what the market would be in town for a building like as an option.
If you think the art hop brings a bunch of people to town and walk around to do that, um, if you know Joey and he runs a lot of stuff down there, but she is so busy.
It's a good problem that we have. Our downtown businesses are busy, but they're generally run by one person. Don't have a lot of staff. And so that's why the chamber being able to take the advertising and those kind of collaborations with our downtown businesses on is really helpful. Because there's usually, you know, one, maybe two or three people that work in them. But I mean, and the art hops that I've attended are well-attended. If nothing else, they at least, we be here so often that people don't even know we have a downtown. So, you know, the more we can do to promote downtown and advertise, the better. It's just, it's somewhat of a challenge for the town to do that because we can't show preferential treatment to businesses. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce can do more of those kinds of promotions.
I, I think that's, that's the key there for, for, um, for this 25,000 is that it is as hard as it is to quantify, it is an investment. And especially right now, similar to what we discussed last Wednesday. Development. You have to put in some money to, or money back, uh, through sales tax and, and increased traffic, uh, for traffic preferably. But it, it traffic nonetheless, that brings increased revenue. So I think for 25,000, that is it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a, um, a significant investment. It may seem right now that we're in, in tough, in tough times, but, um, I think it's, it's a, it's a significant investment. I prefer to see it that way.
I agree. And I feel like if some
minds and brews, we have to maintain our ability to be consistent as a town and continue to hold. Twenty-five K goes away and those go away. I'm not okay with that. We weren't coming here and I feel like there's another situation at hand dealing with the building itself or, you know, we fund them every year or the rent free thing, that's a separate issue. Twenty-five K is not going to save us, right? Fifty cents in the grand scheme. Right. And I can agree with what Marco said.
I I agree with what what Senator just said. I think the twenty-five thousand investment, like you said. Also think we should readdress this lease because.
Yes.
I mean, the town suffered. We had staff had to go through some painful time. It's not easy to lay people off, to let people go. I mean, that the Chamber should let people go, but I think that you're going a little bit too easy over there. Or I think we should keep the visitor center open on one hundred percent. I don't see just, I I don't see Tri-Lakes Cares, Silver Key or the Chamber as being donations. I see that as an investment and as services being provided to the town that we're not providing. So and I think there's I think there's a need there. So I I think it's really important that we keep that that money flowing, keep them open. But at the same time, like I said, I think we should readdress these situation, the building situation.
That's definitely a conversation that we.
Leases are very broad in their scope sometimes. Go so far as maintenance responsibility over to them as well. Doesn't have to be, you know, market standard, you know, lease rates, but something that's fair, you know, something that.
I'm not I'm not against what anybody's saying. Some some tough questions and I theory is I'm looking for, I'm trying to get clarification on the return for investment on our twenty-five thousand specifically going to the Chamber when you think their budget or their. And then what I'm looking for is modernization. Using more online advertising, whether it's the AI developing something or I'm just looking for what's the what has been investment that we've gotten. They're not paying rent the building that we own. And we're looking at other methods of we're going to raise or we're going to raise fees to other here in the town or excluding them. And that's why I'm asking the return for investment. I hope you guys understand that.
Totally.
Every I I I see Tri-Lakes Cares because I go there. I see that. You know, I've been to Silver Key. I think they've done great thing. You know, and I'm not anti-Chamber. I'm questioning. I'm asking the tough question because.
Every single line on that budget is a first step.
That was a good discussion for sure.
Well, I think that the difficulty here is quantifying it. That's exactly what we everybody said. There's no to do a put put an number. I don't think it's possible. I think it is an investment.
As far as direction goes, your consider the use of the seven hundred thousand from the general reserve, that would be cut with the five point seven eight mils.
Five percent.
Any of the. Yeah, I know why we should incentivize them paying their taxes. Right. And then possibly it would be reduced further if we had a solid parking lake program that people actually contribute to.
We'll say I'm not a fan of charging parking at the it's just going to draw people to park outside and walk. Or you're going to create a traffic hazard or.
I think. They have a parking lot that they can use too. I mean, it's the usage of the lake that's there are other lakes in the community that charge to use.
Yeah, we lose money.
We're an outlier.
Yeah, and and really it goes to fund the maintenance of that area, not it's not a moneymaker. It we're not going to be swimming and not screw Smith Duck where we get to swim into it, but.
Would bring the parking program to you. And so Joe was just telling me that they did a study on how many people go and all of that. So this isn't something that is implemented at a staff level. This would come with exactly those discussions. It's one of the concerns is when you parking, people will then go farther out and they'll go into the neighborhoods and they'll, right? And so you have to look at the whole thing holistically to say, is this the right thing to do? And and what are the unintended consequences? So we would bring that to you sometime. I don't know, December or January. I don't know. We'll have that discussion and we'll have all that information for you to make decision.
Two things we can do immediately. Act. And the sales tax revenue.
Is why I like to do two amendments. I'll always do a May and a February because it's good to adjust in May and it's a good touch point to be able to track of things. So we would then bring the budget that you'll see, the final draft will then include those three revenues.
You feel like you've got?
I do.
Okay, you've been awesome.
The whole staff. Yeah, I know. I know this is a a I've walked in on the meetings and as a really, I know you're.
I think there was some seat cushions you looked under. Squeezing ankles out of the knees.
So thank you.
Yes.
Our pleasure.
Solid direction or is there?
No, I feel like we have the direction that we need in order to come to Seventeenth with the final draft.
Final draft.
Final proposed, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we before we proceed.
The next section, we are going to take a recess at the request of staff to reboot the building. We have to reboot the technology in the building. So we'll take, yeah, five, 10 minutes.
Bring the meeting back to order here. Our next items up on the list, we have a couple of public hearing items. Ordinance nineteen, twenty, twenty-five. And twenty-five, Mr. Ungolider, you know that to us? Honor to. Want to take a deep breath? This is a this is a short case. Came to our attention while reviewing the next case that we have a conflict in our code. Prize. So while we were reviewing the the this shopping center that we'll be talking more about in the next case. When I took a look at our our development code, it excluded any opportunity to allow offsite signage or better yet sign providing a sign in the public right of way when you absolutely need to do so. In in section twelve, three, six, oh, one, zero, it says absolutely the opposite. There's a whole paragraph that allows the 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 town to do a lease agreement and a permit for a a a sign within the right of way. Don't think that was actually that omission of that text was intentional. I don't believe it was.
I think it had to do.
I don't think I the code is not supposed to, it shouldn't be tying your hands to do good work. It should be helping guide and and help and facilitate. It's our rules and guidelines to do that work and it gives you options. So what I have in front of you, and I don't want to go too deep into the actual project because we'll get to do that for the next case. The this property here is a a distance off of Jackson Creek Parkway. Want to see this? Okay. I'm sure what shows up on your screen. So.
Death going here.
So it's actually at the end of Blevins Buckle Trail. I'm getting so used to saying Blevins Buckle. Yes. So it's at the end of Blevins Buckle Trail. That means that anyone in this case, anyone who's going to be coming to find this shopping center is going to be going to Jack up up in north and south of Jackson Creek Parkway. And if there's no sign at the at Blevins Buckle Trail, they're going to have to guess to turn left or turn right down Blevins Buckle Trail to get this new development. The the code, the the one section of the code allows for the town to issue permit and a license and get insurance for a a permanent sign located. So what I'm proposing, and I worked with our attorneys on this, is just making a just inserting some basic language in there that we are that they cannot put a sign in the right of way, which I know is a concern throughout town without an encroachment permit granted pursuant to that section that I spoke of. And twelve thirty-six. This would allow for my department and the town manager's department to to review and consider putting in or allowing a developer to put in permanent signage within the right of way. Take it lightly. It is a it's going to require insurance, a lease agreement. It's going to require a lot of details to be filled out. It's also going to be required to meet code. But it does allow for the town then to facilitate something just like we're going to be talking about tonight.
And okay, so temporary signs. So here's what here's what I would just want to say about this. Now currently, there's no signs allowed in the right of way, other than traffic control signs. And if we don't address the temporary sign. Because right now, code enforcement, it for the temporary signs, if you require a permit for the temporarys, then it's going to make the problem worse. So because then somebody's going to not know if there's somebody has a permit or not and there's a sign in there, then other people will say, well, I guess it's okay to put sign right away and they don't know that they're.
It all makes sense. It does make sense. And I what I would plan on doing probably is coming back to you with a couple, a couple viable solutions for dealing with temporary signs. And I'm not talking about the the painter who puts a sign at the corner or the political sign. Those are something completely different.
That's what I'm talking about.
That this there's absolutely no intention to be facilitating the the sign that's dropped at the corner. That this is a a permanent structure that's sign that we're going to be talking about tonight is actually going to have, it has a permit to be installed, a building permit to be installed. It'll have an electrical permit. It'll be reviewed by ourselves as well as the regional building permit. So it's it's way it's more than those.
Yeah, permanent signs is not an issue. It's the temporary signs because it's going to if if we don't address temporary signs and you have them banned within the right of way like the code sets. And it requires a permit for those. That's just a ton of extra work for town staff. Figure out who's got a permit, who doesn't have a permit. Are we just leave those banned? Is that?
Well, I I think that those signs are unsafe. So I think there is a reason to make sure that we allow people to put signs who's in the right of way without a thorough review to make sure there's insurance established for it. Actual structure. As I said, in the in the spring, I might come, I'll be coming back to you with a and I with something that's been done in other communities where there's a you'd work with a group of home builders, for instance, who usually throw signs all over the. You cannot have any other signs out there, but we want you to be successful and we we work with them. Agreement to.
I guess what here's what I'm saying. You drive down the road right now and you see sprinkler blowout signs or Christmas tree light, whatever they are, right? You are not the puppies. You right now know that they're illegal.
Absolutely.
You issue permits for those, you're not going to know who's legal or who's illegal without somebody check.
No intention to be issuing permits for those. That that's not what we're talking about tonight.
All right.
Yeah, no, this is a, these are for, I I think what I wrote in in my memo was it's for very special circumstances where there's just no alternative solution and it's to the benefit of the community. Not talking about the 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 drywall that is looking at doing or a garage sale or anything like that. We're talking about a partnership between the town and that development purpose behind it. I, as I said to to Merrill Kind earlier when we were talking about this is going to, if this type of thing happens, you're going to know about it. Very serious thing. We don't want things in a right of way that can potentially cause a hazard. We are looking at doing that. We're going to share that with you. We're going to make sure you understand that that you could tell your 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 neighbors constituents why there's a sign in they wouldn't be allowed. We are not, I'm not advocating at all for the 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 wire sign that's pushing the ground side to a pole.
Okay, have permanent signs or.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cole.
Yeah, I I would just add to what Mr. Ungolider was saying that that this section doesn't change section eighteen oh six, three, three oh, that specifically addresses those temporary signs. While there may be some revisions to that, you know, and improvements coming later, that section still controls the temporary signs, whether they're allowed and if they're allowed, how they're allowed and and other restrictions on them.
For the clarification.
You can only imagine my recommend recommendation is ordinance nineteen, twenty, twenty-five. It's amending section eighteen oh six, two, five, zero, eight, eight, five of the monument. All right. This is a public hearing item. We will open it up to the public. Those that are here. I would like to speak for or against this or come up to the podium here and sign their name in by their testimony. Anybody here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? And Will, do we have anybody online that is ready and to speak?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
And we'll bring it back.
Public hearing and we'll bring it back with the council for further discussion, consideration, motion. Line creation with.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance amending section eighteen dot zero six dot A dot five of the monument municipal regarding prohibited signs.
Second.
Give a motion in a couple of seconds. faulty. There he goes. Continue, Mr. Ungolider. A laptop with someone tonight so that. Properly. So this is the case before you is for the shopping center that I alluded to. Legacy at Jackson Landing. This is a public hearing and what is was provided for a plant commission meeting, a public hearing and for plant commission originally was scheduled. At the public hearing on September tenth, that public hearing was continued to October eighth. The plant commission conducted that public hearing that notice before I'm up on the screen is what is that was provided. A legacy of Jackson Landing is being proposed by Chris, the legacy development partners. The location is at Evans Buckle. Hold on here, but it's a tongue twister at the southwest corner of Blevins Buckle and Jackson Creek Parkway. Earth is Monument Marketplace, which is a PUD. Depot Coles. Coffee shops and Walmart and other stores to the west is I twenty five or State Highway. To the east is some vacant property along Higbee Road, which is in the Regency Park. Zoning districts to the south is the monument and is my industrial and property is surrounded by community commercial. The request for on before you tonight is preliminary and final planning development and preliminary plat. Final plat for phase one of the Legacy of Jackson Land. Quick orientation maps, the the property which I showed at the previous presentation is a, is piece of property that's at the west end of Blevins Buckle, directly south of the Home Depot shop. Home Depot store. The property is designated for community commercial area. This map also shows that there's desire for open space or trails along the highway is, is in addition to green area that's running along a waterway directly to the east of. This is where I turn it over to Carl Barton to do his portion of nation and if any questions need to tell her. Thank you.
Evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Carl Barton. I'm with Kimberly Horn and Associates, and I'm representing the developer for this project of Legacy of Jackson Landing. So again, thank you for taking your time today to hear our presentation and consider our four applications that Dan discussed, and I will talk a little bit about those in more detail. To mention, I'm with, as I mentioned, I'm with Kimberly Horn and Associates and so I'm part of the development team. My name is Carl Barton, also joined this evening by Brad Cooney from Kimberly Horn and Associates. He's a civilian here who's helping us on the project. The remainder of the development team, we've got, of course, we've got Chris Hague from Legacy Development Partners, also joined this evening by Bethany Rudy and Madison Hoover, who are from the Garrett Companies, who are one of the other members of the development team. And then RSP is the architect on this project. They are here in spirit with us this evening. But we will be able to handle and answer any questions you might have regarding the architecture, which we will spend a little bit of time towards the end of the presentation discussing. So with that, I do want to step aside for just a moment because I am going to let Mr. Hague come up here and discuss a little bit about Legacy Development Partners, going to give you some background on projects and and such. So we'll let him give that presentation and I'll come back and run you through the application.
Good evening. Chris Hague, Legacy Development Partners, president, founder. So Legacy Development Partners, we are a newer company, but very on experience. So I found earlier this year, and we're already working on a large project here in Colorado, so we could not be more excited. The company is founded with a strategic partnership with the Garrett Companies. Your companies is a top ten multifamily builder and developer in the country. So their principal and I both have a history with each other spanning many years back when I decided to found the company, I went to her. They seek some guidance from him and he ended up being a partner. So we've got very deep experience on the retail side, commercial side. I've personally done projects in thirteen states, I think technically now it's fourteen. One point three billion in project value. We have combined experience of about forty five years and have done projects in about fifty different markets throughout the southeast Midwest.
Thank you. So Dan did a really good job of explaining the location of the property that we're, that we're talking about this evening. So I'd belabor that, that point any, any further, but you know, so you can see it's generally adjacent to I twenty five and south of other existing commercial developments. So of course, it makes sense that we would be here this evening to talk about this kind of development on this particular property. I think the important thing that I do want to mention here is we, we talk about the applications tonight. So Dan mentioned, we've got a preliminary PUD, preliminary plat, final PUD, file, four different applications, but obviously very related. The preliminary PUD in fact covers the entire thirty acres of the property. That's what we're talking about here. It's about thirty acres. Give or take a little bit of change there. So that the preliminary PUD is going to cover all of that. And then the final PUD that's for you this evening is for phase one, and I'll talk in more detail about what exactly that is, but that is about eighteen acres. Important thing to also know is that as part of the preliminary P and the approvals that are going along that and what it shows is all of the major infrastructure to support the entire thirty acres. Cause basically the way this is shaking out is that all the big stuff needs to be done in order to support me. So it's all coming in, in the front, which I think is a very important point to know that when this gets kicked off, it's not going to be one of those situations where you have something half finished. Project overview, the project vision, Legacy of Jackson Landing. Regional shopping destination anchored by a large national retail tenant. About a hundred and twenty nine thousand square feet there. That's that large building there located in the northwest corner of the development. Once you have that kind of large national anchor tenant, you tend to get all of the other accessory and ancillary tenants that come in as well. So you've got the large tenant, and then there's going to be a called a major, we refer to it often as the major P tenant as part of this first phase, but it's going to be a mid box kind of tenant. Then there's a bunch of inline retail, restaurants, that kind of thing. I think what's important here is that this is a new amenities, new services, new tenants, new retailers to the monument market. And when we talk about the monument market, we're of course not just talking about the town of Monument, but we're also talking about the surrounding areas of those other people who live elsewhere who will then come to Monument to go to this retailer because this is where it is now, and they will leave their sales tax dollars behind. I think it's obviously very. And it's going to, of course, be a well maintained site with high quality amenities. This national tenant that we're working with here, it's very high standards. Those are the standards that have been implemented throughout this development, and we'll talk about that in a couple of key different ways. Convenient and safe parking speculation, of course, we'd expect nothing less. And ample parking and there are some improvements to Blevins Buckle. Didn't realize before that that was such a sticking point in that name. This was called Blevins Buckle and Jackson Creek Parkway are also getting improved. I'll touch very briefly on a couple of previous hearings, public hearings that we had on this. So way back in May, we were here for a sketch plan approval, not with this body, but with the planning missions. We talked to the planning commission about the sketch plan approval. They gave us a unanimous recommendation. I said that. And then we went back in October for a planning commission hearing on the locations. And again, unanimous recommendation or approval. And I think one of the things that's important is this image that's on the screen here is what we presented at the sketch plan application way back in May. It is substantially the same. There have been some tweaks, a few things have shifted around a little bit, but it's generally been consistent. We've been very consistent throughout this whole project. We know what this is and how it's all going to come together. That's where we have been and to get us here today. So there's four apps. So again, there's four applications, plan you preliminary PUD, preliminary plat, final PUD, final plat. Higher thirty acres. Creates nine separate, the preliminary plat creates nine separate lots, plus a tract for the stormwater detention. The final plat specifically, and the final PUD specifically covers lots one, two, and three, and tract A. Tract A is that stormwater track that's created in the southwest corner of the element. Also includes these improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway and the entire infrastructure service site. Dan did mention that this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It's designated CC commercial center. We are presenting you this evening just that as a commercial center in the location where it should be in design to town standards. Believe it is in compliance with the comprehensive. So preliminary PUD, what it basically does, it is big important job of preliminary PUD is that's the framework for the entire. So you, as the town decision makers have an idea. Yes, this is general, this is what's going to happen out here. So we've got this, this site plan here, it overall, overall layout of the site as the site develops, things are going to be a little bit different than what's shown on the screen, but it's going to be substantially compliant. It's not, then you have to, then you have to come back here again and talk to you about amendment, many. Well, beyond that, what it also does is it establishes the allowed uses. It establishes design guidelines, specifically not just architectural design line, design guidelines. So that's a really big important part because it makes sure that all the uses that come in is cohesive development, because that's part of what the comprehensive plan request, cohesive development, but also it establishes the standards to by which future development will on the site will be reviewed again. So dimensional lots and blocks, you know, because we're creating all these different lots, building heights where the open space is generally going to be with a aim generally to be considered a part of the open space, landscaping, all of that, and also establishes the site wide infrastructure access, which is what I'm. Yeah. Okay. So a few things that are highlighted here. The first one in the light blue there is Blevins Buckle, right? So Blevins Buckle is going to get widened, right? So if you think about Blevins Buckle today, if you go out there today, that north curb line is going to generally stay where it is. But on the south side, it needs to get wider in order to accommodate more travel rates. So and as part of that, we'll also get sidewalk tree, you know, street trees, lighting, all of the things that they have ordered and, you know, straight up to code. Biggest change is probably over at Blevins Buckle and Jackson Creek Parkway, which is going to get a traffic light. Addition that traffic light is good, that intersection will be configured for two left hand turn lanes. Going north on Jackson Creek, taking that left into Blevins Buckle. Two lanes for that left. That is a very important thing. It's going to. So of course, we did a traffic study with, with this as well. The dual left turn lanes are contemplated in that traffic study, and it really helps for twelve. Was sufficiently. So we've got the two left turn lanes. Also shown here. We've got a new road that's coming, comes in on the east side there and it curves around to the south. And then the other important thing I think is the truck access is there in the northeast corner. So trucks will come in along the north side. They're going to do, they'll turn around and then they'll back into the various loading docks and things like that. So to the extent possible, it kind of keeps the trucks away from the interior of the site, which is maintain the, the guest experience. Important thing, this is in here in italics, is something that came up in the planning commission was a question is, well, when is all of this getting done? And essentially these improvements that need to be completed ahead of schedule. These are all, all of this stuff needs to be done and functional right from the jump. So that's important.
Yes, quick question. I'm glad to see that Blevins Buckle will get widened. The, the road, well, I guess it's also Blevins Buckle as it turns north. Northbound towards Home Depot.
That's correct.
Is there anything that's going to be done to that road as well? Because if the truck access is there at that northeast corner. And I ask this because I've seen Home Depot trucks, Walmart trucks, and so if, if we're going to provide two left hand turn lanes there, it's closer to I twenty five. So I, I foresee more and more trucks using that that entrance point versus further down. And I'm wondering if the Blevins Buckle going north may need to be not four lanes, probably not, but widen to to the three to take in those, those trucks, especially if they're going to turn at that truck access point. Have, did you guys take a look at?
We did look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and based on the number of trucks, the, the current section was, was found to be sufficient. So we looked at it, and that's what.
Oh, and there's already developed lots there. No, not, no.
Not where they're talking. Yeah, the, the property of the east is developed.
It's, it's brass.
Right. I thought you were talking about.
My concern, my, my concern is the same thing. Why do you have this room going into this complex, but the through traffic? That's going to go north. Like Marco stated. Going in, going over to where it's now known as, whether it's Freddy's. Well, not, not just that, I'm talking about beyond that is have that turn area to go into the
Coles.
No, well, yes, Coles, but also on the right next to Freddy's, you have like a physical therapy shop. You know, the, up the the wine, the winery.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just, it's just the volume and traffic that's, that cuts through there right now, just like Coles or Home Depot and some of the other places. She's going to increase that turn, turn of this project. And then, and then in addition to the trucks. You build trucks trying to make a left turn to get in behind these loading docks and over the docks as well. Where you have trucks that are coming in now of Coles and Home Depot utilizing that. That road.
I think what's worth, where the concern is, is that you're going to have cross traffic shopping, right? People that would leave Walmart, leave Home Depot and use that interior road to get down to this new on top of the eighteen wheelers that are going to be coming in. So what's going to be done to that road there to accommodate the, the inter vehicle traffic? One shop to another. Going to, it's going to be two lanes or? The current plan is that that road remains in its configuration, which is if you think about it, if you go out there today, there's curbs side and on the west side, there's a line of street lights. But you've got the east side, you have the, the curve, you have the, you have the, it's a print shop and, and such in those, those structures there. And you've got the road and the other side, you've got the curb and the existing street lights. So those points fixed.
Right now, I think two lane and.
Too late, that road is just trash.
I, I mean, what, what's? What's our recourse, Dan, if it comes to be that the traffic those roads cannot support the traffic that's generated from this shopping center?
Because right, right now you only have, there's only one. Buckle. One buckle is the only way in the night. You mentioned music is going, going north.
And while you're on that subject, there is one, there's one in and out. So is that an issue? I can address it all at the same time.
Well, I can, I just want to point out that Blevins, Blevins Buckle is right away because east west. That road that you're, you're referring to right now is. It's a part of the shopping center, the door.
Monument Marketplace.
Monument Marketplace. So if there's going to be a problem with that, I think, actually, the only thing I was worried about when I saw this, making sure the trucks can make it around that right turn. Third, which is what they've signed for. If there is in fact a problem. Um, uh, if there is in fact a problem. Get it, I buy it, money place and dispose of the line. Left or something out, but right now they're, they're proving the right of what that leads to this property. It's really be difficult for us to force, but the. Maybe you know, uh, the, the other properties in the north, maybe changes there, so.
It's an impact. It's going to be an impact that they're creating. Do the property owner that's creating the impact could be contributing to reduce.
I can say that that would be an issue between two property owners or two, two years. Um, I, the traffic's already, if there is truck traffic, there's already truck traffic going in, but in that direction. I've been on that, on Blevins Buckle a lot to go review this. It is a shortcut for, for many folks. Uh, this will be a safer shortcut now because it'll have uh, the traffic light improvements, the road will be wide, it'll be separated. Uh, the east-west uh, traffic or the east-west traffic will be separated from the uh, the east traffic. So I think we're getting an improvement here. I, but I can't really address. This topic between the private, the two private property owners.
Yeah, and marketplace needs to be aware or on notice that the, that road going north is. I mean, the, the potholes, that damn thing, it was like a car.
Yeah. And then again, I go back to.
That's probably part.
This improved, the improvement on the east-west portion of this road, that's the only entry and exit. For all, for all these shops.
Is there, is there no plans for a southern road that goes all the way to Baptist? So there are, so the project does dedicate and ease. Along the eastern and along the length of the eastern boundary for a future connection to the south. Which would also allow for a future connection. The traffic studies submitted shows that the current configuration is with this, the singular access point. Functions, it's the required level of servicing, both without that intersection, right? That new one that's being built at. Shopping center, but also at Jackson Creek Parkway. And then also at Baptist. And it's in, it's reviewed all of the impacts of those, those intersections. Future development will have other connections. And, and this project has been designed to anticipate by the space for those. If it was not constructed.
So regarding fire issues, because there's two required entrances. It looks like you have some kind of a temporary road or some fire access on the. Or is that?
That is correct. That is something that the fire department has required. There will be a connection between this development and the south side of Monument Market.
Does, and that shows that it has a gate on there to say, eight on there?
It does. Needs to have a gate on there because it is not designed or intended for general vehicular circulation.
I'm just wondering if there was some type of blockage on the exit that went out, if there would be another way out.
Well, there, I see what you're, what you're asking.
Sure, why, why, why is it not being improved to handle vehicular traffic?
Um, it's, there's a couple of reasons for that. One, the, the first one is it's not. It's not shown through the traffic study to be real. You don't want to introduce an access point if it's not needed. And this is also very, this, for this retailer that we're, we're talking about there on the, on the northwest corner. They're very sensitive about access to this, to the backside of their establishments. This would put a public, if that was an open public access point. It would be an open public access point directly to the backside of.
It, it's similar, it's similar issues that Home Depot is having where they had to uh, close it off. Uh, because people were driving behind and, and that's the loading dock or the loading area for the staff. And people were literally zipping through there. So.
On the, on the, on slide seventeen though, you also does not, does that not show that you also have? A paved road for the trucks coming out of behind them?
So there is an east-west road.
That's the temporary.
No, the, he's talking about the, the little hook.
The little, there's a little hook inside the long.
That's, that's the temporary road.
Yeah, that's uh, and now you're looking right.
Temporary is probably the wrong word. That's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
That's fire.
You should talk, it's that little.
That's that little hook.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there we go. Yeah.
That's the only group.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's just a. Probably uh, just enough for a fire. It's hard to get through, not intended for public.
Okay.
Use that. Just look at the screen.
Yeah, um. So another, and obviously another really important piece of the, of the site infrastructure is the open space. So it's part of the preliminary um, P U D. And the open space network is also created. I think probably the most important piece of this is along the western boundary of the site. On twenty-five there, there's a significant amount of open space dedicated. Also does include a trail that's in being installed um, per the trails master plan. So it's another example of this development implementing that, that piece of the master plan. Um, there'll be some open space around the, you know, some appropriate for a shopping center, some open spaces around the um. Individual tenants and, and such as, as that individual buildings. But then also around the detention facility, there's going to be a soft surface trail that goes around, around that. So that'll provide an amenity for employees, visitors, they can, they can walk the dog. We, you know, we went to a, did a site visit. We found that this area is actually pretty popular with dog walkers, um, even in its unimproved state. So there'll be, there'll opportunities and, and things like that. So um, that's an important piece of this as well. And then the P U D lays out the framework for that open space and the requirements for it as well.
Question on the open spaces as well. I noticed a notation for, in one of the earlier slides for a, um, a bench. Are there going to be multiple benches throughout? Cause I, I thought that was really neat and.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yes, there will be some, there will be places for people to rest, there'll be places for people to eat outside, you know, all of those.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, we had to, we had to remove that, I'm sorry. Uh. Uh, water and sewer, I, the main point I think to make for water and sewer um, in relation to this is that. There's no extensions of public infrastructure to get to the site. All of the public infrastructure is in place adjacent to the site. Site is intended for development. There'll be new public infrastructure installed in the site because it's going to serve multiple parcels. There's public. So that, there's going to be that, but there's, this is not a situation where we need to run a half mile of sewer line in order to make this develop. All right there. Um, and Tribe View has, has uh confirmed that there's capacity for all phases of the development. So we have what we need here. Stormwater calling detention is uh, provided as well, of course, it has to be um. And that's in the southwest corner, there's a detention facility. That has been designed and sized to serve the entire development and build out, but it's being constructed as part of phase one. So with that, I'm now going to move on to the final plan you develop. So the buildings that are highlighted here in blue are part of phase one. So we've got the large national retailer there in the northwest corner. Directly to the east is where there'll generally be the mid-box retailer, some other inline retail. And then to the south is a building called Shop C. All this is coming in as, as part of phase one. And all the other stuff that you can see are the parking. The stormwater, the curbs, the, all of that stuff, and of course, the improvements uh, to Blevins Buckle and Jackson Parkway is all coming. Well, if I go back to this slide here, you can see those other buildings that are kind of in light gray, those are subsequent phases. You don't know exactly when those are going to come. Sooner the better. Um, but they will come in as final, final P U Ds to this, to this uh, council as well. So you're going to see all. I want to step back and talk about the community meeting that we had as well. It's a good time to talk about it because there's some things that we heard at that meeting that are included in the final P U D. So we went to the planning commission in May for the sketch plan and they said, this is great. You're bringing out this approval, but we would really like you to go out and talk to the community. So we did. So on uh, June nineteenth, we did that. We did it at the Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce office. We had twelve members of the public join us for a little chat that evening. Couple of things that we heard, we, you know, we got a lot of questions, a lot of opportunities to answer questions about with the community. Obviously, people are very interested in that. So what a couple of things we did talk about is um, the desire for more pedestrian connections. So one of the things we added subsequent to that meeting before we submitted um, was a new. A pedestrian connection between Shop C and the major B, the mid-box retailer. I highlighted there, that little excerpt there. Um, and then we also heard some things about, about building height. The preliminary P U D does uh, request or include in it, right? With fifty, allowance for fifty feet of, of building height. Um. There's, you know, there's some thoughts, maybe there might be a hotel, maybe, maybe an office building, I don't know yet. Uh, but really it's about keeping the options open for a commercial center of this. That kind of height is pretty standard for something like that. So obviously, you know, we have people in this community are very invested in the, in their community and, and what gets built. So want to be very straightforward about what that is in, in the P U D. And I think the important point that we want to mention with that, or for this, for this group, is that any. Future development that has a building of that height or any height really, needs to come back to this commission. So there's a lot of details and things like that that are, go into the, the um, evaluation of that kind of future development. And that will happen by this council. It will also happen by. All those things need to come, come. Now back to uh, kind of some more of the details here. Um. This, this slide really kind of emphasizes the, the point I made earlier, no extensions of public infrastructure sufficient. Exists at the property boundary. I think one thing that um, we will, as part of this. The infrastructure is being put in, is being put in already, thinking about what's going to come next, right? So we've got a water, looping water lines, you have to do that, you'll be able to connect off of that for the future development. Landscaping and open space, um, talk a little bit, in a little bit more detail here. So this large national tenant anchored. That's coming in, has some very specific site developments, very rigorous, and they're very high quality and they are um. Calibrated to the local environment, right? So they have standards that are specific to the, to the Mountain West, Western region that have been implemented through landscape design. One of the biggest things that's in this is very drought tolerant. So we're very heavily using native grasses, drought tolerant, minimize water use, it's very. Um, if you look at this plan here on the west side, some of the darker kind of amoeba shapes there on the, in the open space. Are primarily wildflower planting beds. So we're going to see a lot of flowering. Um. And then you've got through there, you've got a trail connection um, that's going to be constructed as part of this. So we think about this, this landscaping, talk about kind of using this habitat supportive thing with the. The flowers, so you've got bees, butterflies, pollinators, all, we'll find some, some things to like here. Um, and then also with some of that landscaping within the, um, the detention facility there in the south. Worked very closely with Tribe View in the design of this stormwater system, both the collection, the transport and the. Water quality, there's like, there's like a four-step process with all of that. If you have any specific questions about that, I'm going to direct you to Brad, he can answer them, I cannot. But if you're curious, he can, he can. Lighting, um, this tenant, this national retailer, just as they have very specific standards about landscaping that we've implemented. I'm also very particular about lighting, it's very important. Um, their safety and convenience of their guests and employees is top of mind for them. So the lighting, the lighting uh, that's included within this final P U D. Is supportive of that safety, but it's also follows the guiding principles of the dark, of the dark sky lining approach. Everything is one hundred percent cut off. Um, and it's got the three thousand K correlated color temperature, which helps with the minimize the blue light. Um, the light poles are generally less than the allowed height. And they've got advanced control systems that will control the lights um, to turn them off when they're not needed. It's not like business hours because they have employees that are there side of shopping hours. But um, this is really important um, for them and for the safety of the, of their employees. And their guests, um, it's consistent with their oper, the, the photometric plants included is consistent with their operational standards. Um, because it's very important for that safety and to be visible as a, as a commercial center to be visible. One thing we did do as part of this process is we went out to Monument Marketplace and we took readings, like what is actually going out there. We took readings and the proposed levels of light levels that are proposed here are less than what we go out. With that, I'm going to start talking a little bit. These are the elevations for the um, large national retailer. And high-quality architecture, I think the point, point here is high-quality architecture, material palette and color. That reflects the, the region and the, and the surrounding development. We've got some. Residues. Based on the palette that I'm seeing, um. It's white. Really important. Never become white. Good job on that. You had it.
I'll take credit where I can take it.
Yeah.
If the wind.
We, we try to listen very closely to them.
And so as part of the final P D, you also includes elevations for the other, there are parts of phase one. So here we have that structure, different architecture, but again, same kind of color palette, same material palette as well.
Elevation, how does the height compare to?
These, I don't have a specific answer for the question. Would not be, I don't think is any taller than those structures.
Am I reading that right? It says. Top of the roof, one twenty-four?
So it's not a hundred and twenty-four feet.
That's what I'm trying to see.
Yeah, so it'd be twenty-four because typically in an architectural elevation, they set the ground levels at a hundred.
I was like, one twenty-four, what?
I think the P U D says something about twenty-two feet and towers are like.
So one of the things that, that does that you are looking at for that, right? So you've got this tower feature here, a structure. So this is looking to the northwest. So they see that little white sedan is heading east. Buckle to pick up truck, it's heading west, they've entered. So this, when you pull in, that was, that's what you would see. And the idea right now is there'd be a um. Little plaza space right when you come in. And then this is Shop C. Or I see a shop city already. So. With that, that is the, of the, the extent of the. P U D, I focused on the P U D, I know there's some plats here as well, um, and I think Dan's going to. As well, generally, you know, the P D is a little bit more interest, um, and the plat follows the P U D, right? We designed the P U D and then we just have the plat to support that. What are the next steps? So we, the next steps after um, the hearing of this body this evening is. Is to, for the development team to complete the construction drawings. Really detailed drawings that talk about how deep the storm sewer line is and all of that other stuff. Um, that gets reviewed by the town, by the Tribe View Metropolitan District and everything like that to sign off on this. So we're already working, you know, we're working on those, trying to get those progressed forward. Additional final P U Ds for all those future faces talked about. Don't have the time on any of those right now, but just know that those are coming. And we are hoping to break ground on this project in March of twenty twenty-six. So just five short months from now to be out on the site. That, like to make myself and the rest of the mountain team, so for any questions.
That was good.
Question. Quick comment, if I may. Just want to, Chris, if you remember, I was in the commission sitting in the same seat at the time. And I made the recommendation, I believe, to have a community meeting. Thank you for doing that. Um, but I just wanted to comment, like, or just mention it to, developer really is listening to what. That's one of the, just reiterating, definitely really good to work with and. that's one of the just reiterating, definitely, really good to work with and appreciate the the joint cooperation.
There won't be a hundred and twenty.
Um, but I, well, okay, I just gonna kind of finish the 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 presentation portion of the hearing. Um, so the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve this. I'm gonna, I mean, I want to apologize right now, the the minutes that I included from the October eighth Plan Commission meeting were so Chair Egley is online actually right now. If you have any questions of that Plan Commission meeting, I think I did outline it pretty well in my in in my memo to you after this case. But in case Ray is uh is jumped on, that's I think. Uh, the finding a fact, these are right out of right out of the code, I I might, I know that Carol had brought brought us through quite a few of those, but we talked about circulation. Parks Trail and Open Space, we show that it fits within the 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 land use pattern for the area being a community commercial. The site is sensitive to environmental characters characteristics. When the site was first coming in conceptually, the pond was in a different place, the building was in a different place. But they worked with the the site itself to to place the buildings where they are and the engine pond and trail system, a place where it is to to fit context and gravity. The they're showing quality architecture that compatible with the surrounding area and our landscape. The landscape design is compatible with the the surrounding area, and I actually think it sets a tone for future development. Tribe View Metropolitan District has confirmed that it is, that it has the capacity to serve this development as well as future phases. Um, and it's going to attract and a variety of new stores, restaurants and hospitality businesses that will serve our residents, the region, and will generate sales tax that could be used to provide quality services to our residents and our business community. Um, so this is the, this is the first part of the actions required for tonight, where we're going to be asking for a motion to approve, right? If me have jumped myself, ordinance, I jumped the shark. We're going to be approving an ordinance number twenty twenty-five, which is an ordinance approving a preliminary plan unit development for Legacy of Jackson and the final plan unit development for Legacy of Jackson, letting the phase one located the southwest corner of Blevins Buckle Trail and Jackson Creek Parkway. Now you get to ask all the questions. But 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 before I let go, um, Mr. Hake and his team have been outstanding. They've been, they came to the table, they listened, not only working Plan Commission, but they worked with your staff, our partners, the utilities and 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 others who all came to the table early on, they listened, responded. I think we started this in February. February, that's pretty quick. So I want to, I just want to saying this to the development community out there. If you come in and work with with our team and listen, we will bring bring you through the process rather than if you bring a standing team to work with us, you guys will be able to do it. So thank you very much for your work project. Then I will go and let you ask all the questions. Thank you very much.
In's comments, concerns from the council.
Question on lighting. Um, so we had a pretty um in-depth briefing three, four months ago on on lighting and and how it's important, especially for a town like Monument. You mentioned that these lights shut off after a certain time period with safety in mind. So I I imagine store X closes at ten P M, and then the lights are designed to shut off after a certain point after, or how does that work? Ish.
Yeah, I could, I can speak to it ish in the sense that I'm not the drafter nor privy to the generally, what it would be is that there would be store closes at ten. Stockers are there for an hour, two hours or something like that.
Terms of lighting of the 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 store and 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 whatnot. During off duty hours, let's call it, because we we've had some issues with some stores that just light up like a Christmas tree twenty-four seven. Not ideal, especially for dark sky type ordinances, for for lack of a term. How how is that type of lighting going to work? Or what what are the rules that we've established with this? With this development?
So I'm I'm going to jump in and and so the that's one of the reasons why there was a delay before, from the beginning of the pub, the Plan Commission initial hearing to actually that. It wasn't that they weren't complying, but we really wanted to make sure, based on the conversation that was occurring here at council, that we did address the 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 large store that's most of this development already had a dark dark sky compliant architecture. So then these lights on the building is is blocked, going, it doesn't continue. I want to clarify just so that everyone understands that when the lights, after store hours, they're going to dim. They're not going to turn off, because we want to make sure that our police department can see what's going on in the park. And they're that it's safe, but we spent a lot of time here. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then we're going to, but we wanted to spend a lot of time, we spent a lot of time with them just to make sure that we met both your dark sky or this community's dark sky wishes, because we knew that's coming, that's coming down the road. It's going to be changing and updating our code. So there again, setting the kind of setting the tone for that retail area. And so the the light standards are lower, they're directed down, but again, there's still the right temperature light to make sure you can tell where if someone's hiding behind a car and what color the car is. So we did, we spent a lot of time on that.
Thank you.
So when you're talking about the lighting, there's a lot of signage on the on the buildings on these little PowerPoint slides, so you're talking about when those stores are closed, the signage on the buildings are going to be dimmer.
That's something we haven't talked about yet, we haven't gone into.
Because we have, we have some signs, especially this is or line of sight with a bunch of residents.
That are elevated.
That are elevated in Jackson Creek. So, you know, because I don't, because so I have I'm wondering, are we dimming the parking lot lights? And the signage on the buildings when when the police is not open? Is that what we're discussing?
So
or are we going to go into like a cutting edge where so the people that have the stock are all parked in one area of this enormous parking lot or move light a bit brighter than the rest of the parking lot that can be turned down?
So I I think the the short answer on that is that there's a lot of details in the, or that would end up in the operations plan that the shopping center owner right, and that is not necessarily something that tip that is typical for a town council to to weigh out on the minutia, the details. Actually, I think you're incorrect, this is a P U D, we create the law with your agreement to be a certain as far as it illuminating the surrounding community, we have the right to make that demand. Absolutely. So the minutia is within our power to what I was going with with that is that as part of the operations plan shopping center, you know, all of that will be covered in in those I would say, Danny, probably you're going to mention that this council has, to your point, Mary, the kind has the ability to condition the approval to cover those sorts of things. But that level of analysis yet on the on the lighting plan is not something that we've photometric plan is part of.
I guess what would I like to note is, there are some developments, I don't want to name them specifically, directly across the highway. When they were first installed, their lighting was bright, I contacted those property owners and told them to turn down. They all listened. That would be something that with it, so even if we're going to have, when the lights go in, when those sign lines go in, they'll probably be a little brighter than normal, because that's typical of those. And I'll I'll work with them to make sure to turn down. But better yet, those, that's a detail that we're going to have to work out. We still have a a public improvement agreement that's going to be a work a work through before this can hold recorded. And I can certainly make sure that's a session that you like to put on there.
That also can be the same for the sign that's going out towards Jackson Creek Parkway that permanents on?
Yes, the same kind of details. I I you spent a lot of time up here in front of me talking about dark sky and lighting, I'm taking it very seriously, so.
Do, I also wanted to mention that when this first started with the sketch plan, we had a lot to control intersection there. What we're dealing with, right? So that was another recommendation of the Plan Commission, but really appreciate that it's really needed. And the two left lane turn, it's going to be helpful as well. Did I have one question, I didn't hear it mentioned? Did the, did the water gardens secure?
So we 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 originally during Plan Commission, there was a, you would ask for rain gardens to be incorporated in the parking lot. And I think it, what they ended up doing is doing a lot of those environmental planting areas toward along the highway around the detention area, rather than putting them inside the parking lot where they could be susceptible to to sand or salt or whatever's treated for the parking. Uh, we did work with them to try to keep a lot of those elements, but we ended up shifting them away from the parking lot.
Good answer. Thank you.
Another question, what we do when we conducted this traffic study? Because there's already an increase of, there's already increased volume of traffic. On Baptist, turning left onto Jackson Creek, going to existing homes in Jackson Creek, the that are being built further down the route past the retirement home and also the apartment complexes. You throw in the mix left and right, in and out of King Super. That's always backed up and creating a long jam, if you will, on Jackson Creek. We kind of looked at that, or is that part of the traffic, somebody addressing that? Because obviously, this is going to create more traffic.
All good points, and I'd actually, the Pine Commission raised this during the sketch plan process and asked for a full study, understand the traffic all the way down to Baptist, that was reviewed and is part of the study. The the two left turn lanes actually gets the vehicles that are turning left into this into the site, out of the main traffic line, main traffic route faster, because now you got you got a few lanes that could fill up. Those are traffic lights, that's correct. Um, and then the long term play on this is that is the connection we're looking at, um, trying to provide other ways, because all these properties here are all zoned and are foreseen as this is only the first, this is the tip of the iceberg for the southern part. So we wanted to make sure that we're extra routes planned for, and so as those other properties start to come in for approval, we're going to start to require other other forms of access to address those. But you're correct, there's going to be additional traffic coming in into this commercial area, and it will have, it will have an impact on that.
And leaving, leaving pretty, there's already connected traffic, people that want to turn into King Supers off of Jackson Creek.
So what what I've heard, and maybe you you probably heard this too, I heard that there is a, and the traffic study even addresses it, that there is a potential for a roundabout at Lion's Tail right out from King Supers heading north. Only a right turn out to use that roundabout, which is probably the only.
Well, I know that the way, you can't put a light there.
Yeah, and I'd like us to be more of that part of that conversation. So I mean, that, but that is something that's been identified, Tribe is doing research out there. He would be, Stapp would like to be part of that conversation, part of that study. Possibly be part of that recommendation to you of what happened on Jackson Creek.
Baptist is owned by the county, so.
Yeah, that intersection is
There's something preventing you from being part of that conversation?
I was going to say No, it's just an interest, there's nothing preventing at all, it's a, there's a study going on, I'm actually conversations with with Mr. McGrady and others, and there's nothing preventing me from having that conversation. But it's
On the roads.
They're doing the study and then we're going to jump in and be part of it, so no, I'm not worried about that at all.
Other questions or comments?
I have several, so if you guys want to. I'll keep it simple for starters. At the, on the lighting is is, I didn't see this in there, but it looked like there might have been some lights that were four thousand K, is there only three thousand K lights in here?
Yeah, so um not, you know, not the lighting designer, but the photometric plan that is submitted with the the P D application was determined to meet the the if there's a light in there that's of a different K on it, I guess, the different temperature that's still designed to be within the dark sky. Which is the that we're using for this.
So I don't think there's any four thousand K lights for them.
I'm not aware of anything.
And I'm not sure if I'm correct on that, that's why I'm asking.
Here we're Yeah, I'm not able to answer the specifics of that question.
Three thousand K.
So, um, if I could, the, we've had two sets of town engineers now, one is a consulting engineer and I had to start, but Shelley had taken a look into photometrics and slowly working. It is probably going to be a, the light standards aren't going to all be sent in a standard height, because some of them had to be taller to make sure they covered a certain area based on landscaping or islands or her building and so on. You you there might be some variance that, but we were actually, I think, they said we spent a lot of time on photometrics, way more time than we have on other projects. But I can certainly look at that, that so that way, nothing surprises you later on.
Adjacent to the interstate, there is a future permit required for a sign that is at thirty-five feet. Monument Marketplace has monument signs, trying to get away from these pylon signs. Is there an issue to require that to be similar to Monument Marketplace freeway type site?
I will refer to Mr. Hake for that answer.
Um, short answer is, yes, we would be okay to those signs, make the base of the signs maybe a little more holes that are there now. We've already looked at that previously. Back in and that that's probably okay, grade adjacent it's a little better for that type of sign than maybe it does to the north. So if that is a stipulation of approval of lowering those signs, not losing sign face, because I think that's the most important part, is have the same quantity of sign face, but have a little bit lower signs with a dressed up base, we're happy to do that.
Okay, because then, you know, it is elevated, so um, it does. I, when I drive up and down there, it's easy to see signage for, pardon.
Yeah, and just to clarify as well, there there are two proposed signs on I twenty-five, we have
Oh, I guess I didn't see the second one.
There there's two, they're, they look exactly the same, they'll be identical, just one further north, one further south. Because we expect to have a lot of really solid tenants that want to locate here.
Sure.
And as you can imagine, everyone wants to be on each side, and we can, so many times.
Yeah, and there's, there's several on
I think they have four.
Yeah, so as long as it's that type of signing of issue, I just want to get away from these pylon signs.
Yeah, we can, we can make that. Yeah, we can, we can make that change. That's no problem.
And, um. So that takes care of that. Um.
Well, make sure you have it written down as a condition.
Well, Steve, write that down. Um. On slide number twelve. It's showing, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I'm looking for clarification. An overhead electrical line, twenty-seven foot height that goes across the, uh, parking lot?
Yes. So that will be relocated.
Well, there's a current.
There's a current line. If you go out there today and look at the site, there's a, there's a power line. We've already been.
We're going to do in-ground then, uh.
Yep, that'll get buried.
Yeah, just double checking on that. Thank you.
You, you have some existing wells on this site that you're.
For what irrigation?
Um, so that well, I will be, I can say that that well is going to remain. And we, the site is being designed to accommodate that. Accommodate the location of the well and. Pipe to get the water from the well, but we're aware of it and designing around it.
So where would the well be used?
It's my understanding that the well is allocated, it's owned and allocated. I don't have the specifics of it. To remain.
So the, the well that is existing today serves the property to the southeast. Via a very old, we have contacted those folks many times about abandoning it. Um, when they go to the property, Tribe is going to require them to abandon it. Um, however, they, they are non-responsive to us. So we've site planned around the well today. With the hopes that while we're under construction, they may be, see the light. And we can abandon the well and reconfigure a very small portion of the site plan.
Okay, okay.
Everything that's being approved in the final P U D, the, uh, rebuildings, they're all site planned around that. The impact that it has on. The south corner where we show the hotel. Um, there needs to be a little modification of that piece if the well stays in place and mainly the line stays in place. The well, we're going to put in a parking lot and you probably won't even know it's there.
Got you. While you're standing up here, yeah, we also have a, you have a retaining wall along I twenty-five. Do you have a height on that yet?
Um, I do not personally have a height on it, but we can.
Yeah, max size seven feet or less.
Okay, so it's small. Okay. Um. Regarding uses. So you have several uses listed on the P U D and I understand they, you know, that those came with that property. So I get that. And some of them don't make sense to even have on this site. So I, I mean, like. Transit center and things like that. This is probably not a site for a trans. But, um. But you do have cell towers permitted. Is there any chance that cell towers are going to go on here?
Um, today we do not have Verizon calling us, asking us to put a cell tower on the property. Um, as technology advances, we would like to maintain the ability. To add one down the road if we do get that phone call. Cause I think they can, where the technology that I've seen is going to go is going to make them, uh, much more discreet. And it can even go on roof structures that you might not even know they're there. So we don't want to get caught up on a technicality if the technology changes to not be able to do it. Coverage gap for cell user.
So there wouldn't be anything similar to the cell tower that's just south of this, that's on the old lumberyard.
I don't believe so. No.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're discreet and we don't have a bunch of cell towers.
Yeah. If, if the stipulation was to ever limit it to one, then I think we would just, just fine with that.
I have a couple of questions about the stormwater retention. So that would be Brad, I guess.
Yep.
A lot of this is outside of your area, but. You've got to probably plan on this to figure out how you're going to. Work your opponents. And in the, in the drainage study, it says that there's no design documentation for the twenty-four inch C dot cover, I twenty-five. How does that impact? The stormwater that's going to hit over into Monument Creek?
Certainly. So we've already been in discussions with C dot. And so what we're doing is we are effectively doubling the size of our pond so that we are restricting the release rate. We're containing twice the hundred year volume. And so we're restricting the outflow to then be. The existing capacity within the swale actually that's adjacent to I twenty-five before it even gets to that twenty-four.
And is there like perk test for this pond so that, you know? Going to the ground as opposed to least?
Given the limited release times that we have, the majority of that will actually leave pond. It will not infiltrate down.
Okay. So you factored it in?
Yes.
And then there's the five-year storm flows that's seems to be higher than normal. Is this, it's handle those as well? Over years, although this year's been okay.
Yep. We've got twice the hundred year covered. So if we can handle twice the hundred year, we are good with the five year.
Okay. It's real important because the damage that's been going on in USOP, so we're trying to help everywhere we can. Okay. Thank you. Some of this stuff is twenty-five pages. Answered or is. We're here to try to do the best.
I appreciate the questions, actually.
Um, yeah, that's good for right now. Oh, one, one, one thing. That I'd like to try to address now too, is Monument Marketplace has trees in there. They're twenty-something years old that are not more than six feet. Um, are these trees going to like that?
I mean, I think, I think any.
So terrible.
That, that, that's a question. I think we can look at our, at our, uh, landscape requirements in the future, but anytime you put a tree in a landscape island, um, you're limiting its growth potential simply because it's a, it's a, it's an underground pot. Um, we can certainly work with them to see if there's anything that they're planning on doing to, to allow the root base to, um, to extend past, uh, the, the islands themselves, but. It's hard to, for you to witness a, you're, you're not going to witness a parking lot tree grow that tall unless you've done some really good underground infrastructure.
Potentially running the problem that the roots are going to pop up over the, the parking lot too, right? I mean, that's the whole point of. Putting them in pots is.
Yeah, that's new thinking, but no, no, that, but that's a good comment. And we're going to talk about that because downtown trees, uh. If you're in your streetscape, uh, are going to have the same kind of issues and you can't just, uh. You, the, the, the root ball has to be able to expand if you want a bigger tree. And, uh, if you, um, or you just have to have, um, uh, capital improvements program or replacement program set up. So you replace tree. Um, because they're not going to live a full life cycle. Sure. If Cassie were here, she'd be, yeah, damn. So. For now, okay.
Okay. It's a public hearing item. So we'll move to the public. Uh, to open the public hearing, we will find out if there's anybody here in all that would like to speak. Uh, for or against the ordinance to approve preliminary plan unit development. Anybody who'd like to speak for, I guess. Anybody online?
Well, there's no one online, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we will close public hearing item. And I will bring it back to the council for any further discussion, questions for the applicant staff. I'd like to address something before a motion gets thrown out. Because, um. Height limitations are always a thing. Um. And I appreciate that on this P U D that the. That the main retail space is spelled out on the height of one-two-ish feet plus the towers. Very helpful. I know there's a potential hotel or whatever it's going to be at fifty feet. And I know that there are people that live to the east of this that may be impacted by that. But this property, I believe, and I'm, I'm going to edge on this a little bit because I don't remember for sure, but. Both sides of I twenty-five, especially on the west side. When that property was zoned by El Paso County had hundred-foot height limitations on. And some at least on the east side did. I believe this was one of them. I don't remember, but when I was on the planning commission, we addressed that and we lowered. To fifty feet. And I think it's seventy-five feet up. Although when anybody comes to us with a P U D, we really try to discourage going there. So that, this property has been zoned like that since the eighties and. I am sensitive to. Getting blocked or I probably locked here. I did, I went out there and walked on the site today. The surprise at how much lower it is than. So, and it slopes off towards the interstate. So the impact isn't going to be as much as. My marketplace is, um, but I am sensitive to existing homeowners that live here and, um, I just want everybody to know that. In the past, we have tried to restrict these heights from being so high up. Um, that's all I got, Steve.
Well, yeah. We want to make sure we have the condition on the signage. So you want to spell that out?
Well, we're still discussing and, and, and ask them.
I just want to. Stress to, to Dan, uh, have that conversation. I'm, I'm just not sold on the, um. Roadway that's going to turn north. I, I mean, the, the existing condition of that two-lane road is terrible. Number one, number two is I just, I think the increased traffic is. Additional issues and concerns, especially during, um, the timeframe. Needs to be. scrutinized and or having conversations now with. Being, uh, box stored and trial view. On this roof, that's, that's connected up because that's just. Yeah. That, that's my, that's another, that's just a concern that I just. Evented and addressed.
We'll do my, that, that's a, that's actually some. The, uh, because there are other, there are other, uh, property deficiencies to the north. If I can get to hold of the right party to.
Does anybody else have anything?
I think for.
All right. Motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-five and ordinance approved. And unit development for Legacy at Jackson Creek Land. Final plan unit development for Jackson, Legacy at Jackson Landing. With the condition that the proposed signage adjacent to the interstate. Um, be monument signs similar in height to Monument Marketplace to the north. Well, the construction design is going to be. Might not be the same as theirs.
I, I understand which are true, which are proposing and I actually, uh, Counsel Campbell, I understand what you're, it, it, it's. I can, I can work with him on that.
Okay, we'll give, uh, a moment. And she's already. Congratulations. That motion passes seven to zero.
Yep.
Thank you for all the, all the work that you guys put in. Really appreciate it.
Eighty-two degrees yesterday.
Beautiful out yesterday.
All right. Next up, we have another public hearing item.
Your presentation for this. I'm going to make this one very short.
Okay, shoot.
Uh, because we've already talked about the project. This is, um, plots are technical. Uh, so that's why I, um, so that's why I don't really think that you need a, it's, it's approved by a resolution just showing that we've met the technical. We have a preliminary plat that's planning out the entire property. Uh, and then we have the final plat for phase one, which is specifically planning out the details for phase. Uh, both of those plots have been reviewed by our engineers and, and are showing to be in compliance. Not only with the, uh, the preliminary and final P U D that you, uh, that you approved tonight, but also with state, uh, state and federal and all their regulations above. Oh, local too, local regulations for Platts. So we're just recommending again approval, uh, recommending approval and planning commission recommended approval for the preliminary plat and the final plat for you. The motion is provided to you.
Again, anybody here or against this resolution approving the preliminary? And final plat for Legacy of Jackson Creek? They'll go online.
We'll bring it back and we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any further.
In mood lot nine, the hotel, the restored hotel with that.
It's just a plant.
It's, this is the plat. So the preliminary plat includes the entire site, all thirty acres. And then the final plat is just for the portion that they're showing developed, involved in phase one, which is not including that potential.
Lots.
Yes.
Uh, motion. To approve resolution sixty-two. Zero two-five. The preliminary plat, Legacy of Jackson Landing and the final plat. Legacy of Jackson Landing Phase One.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor of Southern. Not you.
Not you in the back.
Welcome to Monument.
Yes, thank you.
And we appreciate all the kind words that Dan has given to me some book which we have a fortunate, um. Problem solver, which we do not see in a lot of communities, unfortunately. So look forward to continuing to build a relationship with Dan, the team, all of you. And start pushing dirt around in five months.
No, we just, we're going to get stuck with him now and his big head not being able to fit through the door. So. All right. Uh, comments on items on the agenda. Individuals attended person may raise their hand in case their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand. Digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. But here in Town Hall that would like to make a public comment.
No, no one, no one, no one's account, no one.
Come down and sign in and. Tell us what's on your mind. Tell us what's on your mind.
Just a comment about the Chamber of Commerce. Some time ago. Maybe somebody already thought of this, but. And to boot. President of management. Um, we talked about giving them twenty five thousand dollars and getting value for that in terms of. And attracting people to Monument. Maybe somebody's already thought of this, but. Think we ought to monetize the free rent that we give them. And go back to them and say, look, we want value equal to the free rent plus the twenty five thousand. That equates to. That's the value of computer promotion that we want. So figure out what that is and you, Chamber of Commerce, give that to them.
Excellent point. Anybody else here at town hall like a public comment? Anybody online, Will, that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised there.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Go to the. Manager's favorite item. You got the item authorizations.
I don't have anything for you.
Whoa, hang on. She left them all in the palm.
Yes.
Talk about Everest. He's on the wrong. Daylight savings times. Right. Uh, council comments. Any council comments? I've got one. Um, it's Thanksgiving time. Month of Thanksgiving. Hope you're looking for contributions for annual turkey. Uh, investment. Thank you. Pro League's cares. Um, I've already received from. And now I've. Whoa, that's a lot of sure. Um, and then someone's going to have to help me move all the carts with that donation just. Um, but yeah, so it's that time. So I will go shopping based on your contributions and. I'll be there for the picture. That'd be great. They take a picture of us dropping the turkeys off and. I'll probably go. Well, I'll coordinate with Haley when they're going to exit the turkeys. So. But I want to make sure we get it safely as soon as they go on sale. Or or. Safely, whatever. That's my only comment. Anybody else?
Just a.
Oh, yes, we definitely. Yes, definitely has a comment to make about something.
Okay, I just want to highlight. Um, for those that could not attend or did not listen to the to the. A meeting that we had Wednesday. I thought it was a great meeting. Um, and so I encourage everyone to to listen to it. Um, we had a pretty. Impressive economic development. Plan proposal that the staff worked hard on. Um, and hopefully it comes to fruition. So thanks again to the staff. Uh, and for the citizens, take a look at. Uh, to take a look at that meeting and and see what what your staff is is accomplishing.
And thank you to Chad.
Yeah.
Participate. We we wrote a joint letter to the Department of County Commissioners. Starting Chad Smith's appointment to the Fountain Creek Water District. It's been answered, but. In the time. We discovered, and by we, I mean. Someone sent this to Earl Kind. That the Fountain Creek Watershed District is part of statute. And the statutory requirements or appoint. The pally representative requires that if somebody is nominated, that they must appoint that person. And. elected to do that unilaterally after Calhoun Springs had already appointed him and after he was wrecked. As a nominee. So I have a different letter now. For everyone to sign.
I sit on down.
Need a pen? We'll provide this letter to staff after. As. Signed with her. Forwarding to. Uh, the same folks. Coming in the last letter.
I attended. We'll affectionately call it the Steve Show. Chuck Berman and Steve Schleicher. Who did a podcast and allowed some of us to sit and listen to it. They may be doing it locally here. It's. It. First of all, they're hysterical. These guys are should be a comedy team. Um, but what they presented was the new programs that are available in El Paso County. The first one is. That you you can now, as of last week, they've signed up for. The property on the property website. To have your name, you put in your name, you can do ten. Um, up to ten. To and they what they'll do is they'll flag if somebody goes in, tries to. Change your your. Uh, need your title on your property. Because that's been a big scam lately that people try to do. Well, now they've they've been corrected. So they did that. They've done also it's. instituted a an escrow for those people who have property, the property that it's not under. Mortgage. So if it's paid off, you get your property bill at the beginning of the year and. Oops. Got all this money to pay. Now they've set up an escrow situation where you could sign up and it'll be taken out every month. You don't even have to worry about it. And those are only two of the the programs that that are being done in El Paso County that most of us don't even know about. But yeah, it's and they've been working with with Silver Key to set up a meet here. They're doing one in the south at the Silver Key. Complex and they're also going to try to do. In one. So there may be some connection, you know, with them for setting something up. I don't know here maybe. You know, I I'm that's just a suggestion, but I think there's a lot out there that a lot of us don't know about that they're willing to. Put on the dog and pony and. We should take advantage of it.
So that website is live. I already did it.
I did too.
And it's real easy. You put in your your name. Privatives of your name. So, you know, Pat, Patrick. Beagle. Doug Muffin, whatever, right? And it and it will flag, it'll flag and notify you if someone tries. Imported documents. So it's pretty cool. What else? No? Okay, uh, then I will look for.
Mind the public about Wednesday's.
Yes, I did. I just totally spaced that. So Wednesday night. Uh, here. Here. Six to eight here. Uh, informal meet and greet conversation with the council. So if if you're watching out there or you're reporting on it. Um, it is a great way to just have an informal conversation. Hopefully, we will be sitting down amongst. The constituents, the residents, whoever wants to come and just. Shoot the breeze with us about anything and everything that's going on. Last one was decently attended and it went really well. And so we're going to be doing these quarterly and it could be about anything you want to talk about. Okay, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
On favor?
I.
Adjourned.